All right, we'll call to order the regularly scheduled school board meeting of October 25th. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of October 11th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the 11th.
Thank you, Pam.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, if you have a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, abstentions, and then carries. Next up is the approval of the non-public minutes of October 11th.
I make motion to approve the non-public minutes of the 11th.
Thank you, Pam. There, second.
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Hey, brother, this is Kevin O'Moos. And all who's in favor, if you have a saying aye.
Aye.
Close, questions, and then motion carries. Next up is court comments.
I had none.
You have that. Beth, this is administrative.
Hi, I've been with the auditors for three days now, so I'm kind of.
Yay.
Yeah, they have finished their field work at 4:10 this afternoon.
That's my office, so.
So, yeah, just a few little things to tie up with them, but it actually, it went well, you know. I think I had, we had this discussion. Every year, it's like new auditors within the firm, and I don't know, they keep getting younger. It's not, has nothing to do with me. But they're really good, had some good discussions with them, and they really know what they're doing. Anyway, budgets are currently being worked on by the teachers. The admin's gonna start their review, I think, next week, yeah, by the end of next week, beginning of November, that's this week, but. Yeah, so we'll start there and pulling everything together. Yeah, so that's about all I have for.
Thank you. Duncan again.
Okay, so we did go to, I had to go to that conference on October 19th. It did involve the assessment account, it was the assessment accountability conference, which lasted two days. I went one out of the two, but it was kind of interesting because I went to one session with, was just Alma, which is what we use as a student information system. But now this, you know, we are using it, so they were trying to bring out, okay, now this is what it's, you know, your information's gonna look like when it comes out. So it, listen to that, that was very interesting. And then the other one was demonstrated success, which is, which is a separate entity in this. They look at student information data, but it's more in the academic areas, like curriculum programming. They look at the standards, they looked at, you know, standards correlating the curriculum and the common core. So it was, it was very interesting, it was a good, good job. And of course, the girls soccer team, just, just to let you know, it was originally four o'clock. We found out it was three, but he should realize that it was. Let's see, the safe grants are coming out at the end of the week, and will be another set of safe grants. So we'll be looking at different ways in like to build the requirements and the needs of the districts. And just that with the auditors, yeah, they still left their stuff in the office, does that mean they're coming back again? I mean, now that paid for for this month. I thought it was this.
They're probably coming back next, yeah. So the safe grants, we had, I know that we had some money, and I mean, we had put out a bid, and we got like a partial, we got like a partial bit of things that could be done with the money that we had.
We got finally a full bid. But, well, I guess we got one, yeah, it didn't, what we put in the grant, we couldn't do all of them.
Yeah, and they were gonna work with us about picking, you know, the higher need items.
Right.
So is this sort of money that can be used to finish those?
Some of it, yes, we'll, yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
Great. All right.
Okay, and that's it.
That's it. Mr. Robert.
Great, well, good evening, everyone. I know Dr. Gibson again mentioned the girls playoff game tonight. Really fantastic, they won five, nothing, in case you weren't there. Very well attended by students and community and staff and whatnot. Some of the girls actually got word that we canceled our staff meeting today and kind of reassigned it to the soccer field to at least watch the first half, looking really excited. The girls were pretty, pretty pumped to not only be in the playoffs, but then hosting a game.
Yeah, that's very cool.
It was, it was, and kudos to them. Their next game will be Sunday at this point at 3:00, out of Memorial Field in Cochrane, which is right off of main time. Exit two, so we'll be, you know, almost there's any changes there, that will be, everything will get communicated out as we move forward there, and Matt confirms with their.
Is that Memorial Field?
Yeah. Yeah, it's right off of Clinton Street exit, yep. You know, we did send them off in style today, the videos are on the Facebook page. We had the student body that wasn't on the team, K-12, kind of make a little parade line out, and made some posters and banners and things like that to kind of send them off to the backfield in style, so the kids love that.
Very cool.
Yep. Logan Blacy are one of our middle school social studies teachers, is attending an AI tools workshop coming up. You know, AI, artificial intelligence is one of those things that it's here now, it's out there, you know, and rather than just putting the gavage and, you know, just saying, you know what, we're never ever gonna use it. It's not really, how do we use it effectively? How do we teach kids how to use it effectively as a tool? And it's designed around social settings, but it's really about, you know, again, how do we incorporate that as a, as a, you know, a lesson and teach students how to use that moving forward. So that, that's an important piece that, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to tap his brain a little bit about after the conference, just so that we can, you know, kind of draw from that.
Yeah.
It's out, it's out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, towards the elementary end of things, a couple of different things. First, our fifth graders ended up participating in a state kid governor activity, where we had three students that chose to run. They had to create little campaigns that they actually stood up and brought before the fifth graders, had to kind of present their platform, and then all the kids voted and went through the voting process. We had supervisors of the checklist and then kind of a whole.
That's really cool.
Yeah, no, it was great.
There was a lot of talk about that outside the last few mornings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's great. So Caleb Clermont actually was voted in in a close race between the three, the three students, and he actually finished filming his statewide election campaign platform that got submitted, and then students from the district, different districts that are participating in the state will get to view them all, and then they get to vote accordingly.
Nice.
So stay tuned.
Keep us posted, yeah.
Definitely. I think the only other thing that I will share, and of course, as always, if you have questions, was last Friday, kindergarten hosted their KBC boot camp fashion show. We had everything, we had our runway going on down here, and basically, over the course of the fall, they did, basically do a letter a day, they talked about different words that begin with a letter, the sounds and so on. So all of the kindergartners, there's not 26 of them, so we had a bunch of staff jump in as well to, to, you know, kind of showcase a letter throughout that morning, well attended by families as well. And, you know, it was kind of a new thing that our kindergarten staff wanted to kind of put out there. We did the boot camp, we did a little fashion show out here, but we kind of took it to the next level to get some, you know, family participation as well.
And both our principal and vice principal represented letters.
And I was psyched, because last year I didn't get a chance to, I was supposed to, and then I was out of COVID, and I'm like, oh, I forgot all about it, and so I was pumped to be able to participate this year. One other quick thing, just that we came through today, got in the report, is we were picked by the intramusic association to be able to host. We had put in the offer to host the Northern District Music Festival, which is a middle school music festival in the springtime. So it's that first Saturday in May, that middle schools from around the state, kind of Lakes Region, North Country will be coming together here at Glenwood, and Kristen Bushway, and Todd Hunter C is facilitating that. But we were picked to be able to host.
Fantastic.
So.
That's about years and years ago, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Would you mind sharing a thing from Kristi?
Oh, I could do that, too, yeah, sure. I know, it's hard, there's always so much to do. Our new French teacher, Emily Calvin, big into photography, has done a live, they had an exhibit at the library of town. Our fourth and fifth graders actually went over and did a walking field trip there. And as a result of their interest, she was able to partner with Christy Duris, our ICRA librarian, and our ICT teacher, Mr. Adams, and they actually are doing a partnership there to do some stuff with photography through library and media and whatnot.
Nice.
That's super cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you had a chance to check out the pictures.
They're the other guy, yeah, they're super cool.
Very cool. So does that mean we're gonna have another photography class again, like we had years ago? Excellent. Oh, fantastic.
Well, there's always, there's always those potentials, you know, some of those electives are really kind of based off student interest and numbers and things like that, you know, we, you guys know, we're a small school, especially at a high school level, there's only.
I had a student that I didn't even know knew what a camera was, and then got the photography award, and I was like, whoa.
That's a great skill, you know, something that you can take out and do on your own, so.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, I have one thing on that, Saturday is the school state.
Where's that?
I believe it's in Derrick area.
Oh, nice.
It's just a case.
Our riders go out around 11:00, 11:30, based off the schedule that's out. Very good. All right, next up is committee reports, I see we got the minutes of the first two committee meetings, I didn't come from that. Committee work last week.
I have a question from that. I believe it said, I saw something that, um, they, she talked about the possibility of like pet guardians and doing like a reunification drill. I know we did those probably 20 years ago, 30 years ago. Is there any, are there any plans? Is, are we gonna do that? We used to, like, if there was an evacuation, we used to go to church. And I remember having to do a drill to pick up the kids at church, at the church one time. I know now we go jeans playhouses in the community center, but is there a plan to, for the end of day drill with a pickup, pair of pickup at either of those places, because it was definitely.
Yeah, we did, we did do that one time, but we haven't, we didn't do it this year, did we? We just have to drill within the school.
We did every couple of years, when my kids are little, we did every cover year, so.
Yeah, it was something that came out when we met as an emergency response team, as something that was suggested to, you know, we did, you know, in the springtime, potentially kind of run through that process, so.
It's valuable, everybody doing them, and it's nerve wracking when you know it's a drill. I can't imagine when it's not a drill.
Right.
I think it's a very important piece to it, and I would highly recommend doing that.
Yeah.
Well, the other side of that, one of the emergency management guys from down the column says, you don't want to let everybody know where your kids are ending up.
Right.
Type thing, too, that, that's not for me, that was the base, that's not for me.
I really get it.
Well, not real, because we could always change it if we had to, because there was a shooting over there, we would have sent them there.
Right, right.
So that was from.
Interesting.
That's just the other.
Yeah, I know part of the discussion at the, at our committee meeting was, we had to share, and then there's some discussion about, you know, like, okay, so we wanted to be authentic, but we also have kids that would be getting on a bus home normal, so it doesn't have that full, you know, it's not 100% as it would be in the event of an actual. So it's something that's on our agenda to kind of discuss and figure out.
You know, the piece that I was, that I'm thinking is, that, you know, maybe worth drilling is, you know, who's responsible for making sure that, you know, when somebody leaves with a parent, that's being tracked? Everybody has their own, like, piece that they're supposed to be doing, and then how they're supposed to be doing that? That's, you know, and, and making sure that everybody understands what their role is.
Yep. So, so we do have that plan together, we've talked about it at staff meeting, it is pretty structured. We revamped it for readability purposes, and we actually kind of went through and made sure that every staff member that could be in the building is on that list. So either they have that kind of a main role, or they're there as a, okay, what else do you need to point at first? Because those situations are dynamic, and sometimes people are out, or we have staff between buildings at various times, depending on which building it is, what's going on, there's some variables there as well.
Well, that is a good point, we did it, it was more for a fire or something.
Right.
Yeah, your campus has a similar problem to mine in Vermont, where you're on a main road. So if you do a reunification, you're blocking out everything.
Well, that's the good thing about having another entrance onto a side street.
Right, exactly.
For emergency purposes.
Right, exactly. So we run into the same issue, we should do a reunification drill. Oh, wait. Because we're on like a main country road here, so.
Yeah, I will just add that, you know, when we did both of the drills, it took a few minutes to talk to the student body in each location about like why we might be doing these drills, right? And I know a lot of times, everybody goes right to the worst case scenario, but maybe there's just a reason we can't be in the building.
Right, yeah.
You know, it could be a pipe break, it could be, you know, we have the facility issue, it's class, like, it could be anything. You know, and that, I think that was received pretty well, it's not always an emergency, it's just, we can't have it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the.
We did have a facilities meeting tonight.
Oh, tonight?
Joe, I just want to go with a brief.
Oh, yeah, very brief tonight. There's a couple of issues they're getting caught up with on the eating system for the high school. That was pretty much hit, that far, in the spring, I mean, you guys already know, they're gonna finish putting in the, the main middle school wing, we already know that. One opinion we need from you guys tonight is, talked about replacing a middle school locker. Right now, it's set up as double lockers, they want to do away with that, just through single locker. The heavy option of doing gym style with that being open, so when you're locking down, you can see in them, or they're closed. We're not doing, we haven't made up a margin on any of it, we just wanted you guys to think.
Close those, whatever's on those.
Unless you have cameras everywhere.
Right. Yes.
And is there a room for single?
No, this is a hallway one, so.
Yeah, yeah, but like, aren't they saying it's like cage style, so it's not like open?
They're not open, they have a cage, so you can see in them.
Still, for a girl that would happen to have feminine hygiene products, I'm viewed to everybody, I would.
I mean, there was a reason there, being that there was a safety reason that we'd be able to see in the lockers, and there was grant money for the safety part, or you're judging for it. But I wasn't gonna bring that up, because I wanted your actual opinions before the money.
That's still.
That's it.
It's funny that all three girls are closed in the first.
Oh, did you guys?
Oh, I thought you all said open, that's funny.
I don't know, I mean, you have jurisdiction to search lockers, no?
Exactly, for any reason, right.
Uh, well, if you serve them. Okay, Tammy, Paul is ready to offer that for you.
Yeah.
So, all right, so first. I think the only, we have quite a few policy committee qualities that we, on our first reading tonight. So I don't know if it makes sense, if anybody has any questions about that, I'm going to go through each one of them specifically. I'm just looking, you know, just looking at what we got, a lot of these look like, these are SBA recommendations or things that their committees are required, is there, is there anything that you guys did that was sort of like discretionary changes?
Yes, um, and if you look at the notes, this one, the GBCD, instead of saying May.
Yes, I did notice that, yep, and I think that's.
And then, and the BEDG, minutes. We recommended.
First page, Joe, there's like a breakdown, like.
It's a policy committee meeting minutes.
We recommended the option two, I think it was, is that the money on the right one?
Yeah.
Good option two, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I don't know if you've read through them, but option one is just annoying when people say. Option two was just, it, it, it only takes care of the issue without drawing it out in three pages, so.
And this is to address the recent change in sealed minutes and what we need to do in the next 10 years.
Correct, yeah. Other than that, there anything that was?
There were some changes to like the crowdfunding, fundraising amounts and things like that, was that recommended? Was that just discretionary, or is that?
That was a record, the part of recommended, SBA, yeah. Recommended change. We didn't have any of that, so.
I've just, well, I know, the crowdfunding is the title, a few more words, they refer to, or a few more words.
DFGA?
DFGA, yeah.
And the date is inaccurate on the front, it says Wednesday, October 10th, but it was the 11th.
On what?
On our minutes?
Yeah, oh, I thought that's where we were going over, no?
No.
Oh, never mind.
So one of the things I had a question about was the capital improvement cafe. We've added like preparation of capital improvement plans, this is definitely something we've been talking about. And that, you know, is part of our board goals, and, you know, we all sort of have been in agreement with that as an, as an objective. This sort of makes it a requirement, and, and is this something that was, that was SBA recommended? Is this something that you guys decided was, that we wanted to, you know, codify here?
Well, it's been a policy since October 2021, the red part of changes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about the capital improvement program.
Again, it's the SBA recommendations, it's not anything we did on it.
Oh, okay, so, so this is, but this is, because this is what we've been talking about, we're wanting to do.
Right.
They're just saying.
Deb and I have been working on it, and hopefully cross fingers, if the auditors will leave her alone. We are hoping to have something when you go to the voters, it will become usable by the implemented voters this year.
Oh, okay.
It's group vote, oh, so, yeah.
Great. And that was, been a part of our toward, to go.
We're collecting exhibits and stuff at this point.
Right. And I know that was sort of a.
Measurements and things.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
One of the things the auditors have commented on the last couple of years is that our policies were not up to date, but I did point out to them, I said, the policy committee has worked very hard, and everything is up to date, and I said, please take that comment off.
Damn it.
No, I mean, you guys were really hard, last year, everything is, yeah, so now it's just, as the new thing's been out, if something needs to be updated, but.
Yeah.
I had a box at the port of my office, and when we completed the policies, they were in that box, yeah. The only, when we held back, and Judy was gonna do some research, Dr. Simon, Dr. Simon was gonna do some research, sorry, it was, is it included in their packet, or did we not even send it to them? We didn't even, never mind, forget it.
Go back.
Never mind. Forget it.
Forgotten.
Now, so is there any other discussion about the policies on the first reading?
Then I would like to make a motion that remove policies ATA, BEDG, DFGA, EBCC, EAJB, FA, GBCD, IKLJCA, JKAA, KCD, JLDBB. Two second.
Thank you, Pam.
A second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, if you have a saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, and then motion carries. Staff nominations and recommendations, resident?
None.
See anything in the new business, or anything under continuing business with regards to strategic plans?
So, all right, going along, I have a couple of things at some point.
Okay, why don't we do that now?
Now? Then this weekend, stop it up. I was going through the manifesto earlier, what benefit do we get from having a $310 a year chamber commerce membership? Is there a school benefit?
Well.
I mean, if there is, great.
Yes, I mean, I think it started years ago, because we actually did participate in, we bring community and the after hours and kind of showcase to school, I think that's when that started, quite a while ago, we haven't done that for many, many years. Maybe the VIP passes to our staff.
Well, there you go, yeah, that's enough for me, because that's huge, that's a huge benefit for staff. The access to VIP passes, are you familiar with VIP passes?
Yeah. And, and we do have some students that go out on to ELO things with some of the members.
Oh, gotcha, okay, then I'm actually participating with IFLA students. Awesome, perfect, that makes sense, I just couldn't come up with anything myself. And then the other question I had on that was, is game managers, do you pay $35 a game? What does a game manager do in a soccer game, or, not the ref, because the refs are paid separately, or, you know, kind of like, what does a game manager do? Who, who do game managers do that? Yeah, we have two staff members that pay $35 a game as a game manager.
They run the clock?
Oh, is that for the line?
No, the referees don't.
No, no, it's not, I mean, I think it's just, I don't want to say.
We need some sort of staff presence.
We have, we have an AD, we have, um.
Maybe with flattering kids, or.
Is that how they do those?
Just being a staff at a press.
I, that's a no.
Is that the money that goes to the buckets, something like that?
No, no, it goes specifically to two staff members, not to the buckets. Refs get paid separately, and they are the pack keepers, it's not up to anyone. The coaches and or their players keep track of their shots and goals and things.
Kind of monitoring and.
I, I'm so BS, absolutely not.
You don't think they should?
No, I don't think it's necessary, I don't, and, and I paid attention at the game, and I have been all of them, and it's not, I don't see the benefit of that, and, and if, if it needs to continue, I'd like to know why. We have an AD, we have Mr. Louts that's there almost every home game, we have a plethora of parents and staff that are at every home game. I, there's no need to be paying someone to attend a game, to, to not have a specific duty or job, so it's.
Well, it's not necessarily the ref's job, because they don't work for us.
No, no, I thought, when I read that thing, I thought.
Track keeper, oh, oh, I got you, I got you.
No, no, I didn't.
I mean, I would also hear the argument for it, because I, I kind of understand why we do do it, so.
And, and I guess there's more.
It's like there's two things, a $70 game.
I mean, there should be some school representative to ensure that, you know, the field and it's operating within the.
We have an AD.
Guests, they're being avens, it is being avens.
An AD or a school representative should be there, so.
Absolutely.
In the event that the AD is not there.
Yeah.
The referee didn't have control tonight, so I don't know who else, who else would do it.
Well, tonight was an anomaly, so I wouldn't.
But it has a match, I mean, if somebody was being paid to be there, then the ref had to take care of it, but.
I would, I would, I would agree with that, however, I have not seen that with.
No, that's what I was asking.
I don't know, I don't call anybody else, but.
We shouldn't be asking the referee or the coaches to manage to be.
Absolutely not.
They don't know the.
I, I agree 100%, we don't ask the refs to do that, but the people that are getting paid aren't doing that either.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we should get a description and figure out if it's.
Or stop paying people to, for nothing, it's not necessary.
You know, I think at, at this point, I would be eager of, just, if we can just get a clear description of what, of what the, you know, what that job entails, because I, I can certainly see the benefit of having more than just an athletic director help there, just keeping an eye on things, I know some, sometimes games can get a little rowdy, and it's good to have people, you know, present just to make sure that everybody's, you know, acting properly.
Were those officers actually to do that, or no?
The SRO works those into her schedule as.
Okay, but I remember, I remember that discussion. Okay, but I remember, I remember that discussion.
Yeah, right.
And she's awesome, she's always program.
Fantastic, yeah. I love with the red shirt, she added to her uniform, she had her red and black on.
Full of spirit, yeah.
That was good.
She was in the whole, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, all right, moving on. Um, we covered that, we covered that, I went to, did, we, did I discuss a delegate assembly with them yet or just before I went?
Before, you haven't talked about it.
Um, it was, um, you know. Not eventful, I mean, the, the biggest thing was they, um. All of the, everything passed that, that the um, school board association was um, in support of. However, I think every single um, uh, item was um, changed, they. I can't think of the word, they amended it, thank you, um, every single one of them, so we had votes on the amendments to the amendments, to the amendments. And then reading it back and it was slight, almost painful, um, however, it was not super eventful and went by just fine, um. The Spare of New Hampshire Awards were held recently in the Linwood Interact Club, which is middle and high school students. Were uh, recognized as volunteer of the year, year volunteers, I forget, that was on their Facebook page I was looking at earlier. I just want to mention that because our Interact Club does a ton of um, volunteer work and, um. You know, fundraising things.
They're already definitely one of those people.
Always working, yeah, and um, Deb, Doug, Doug is the chief overhead is their um, main advisor. And just does so much with them and they are really an awesome group of kids.
And he got a really big award too.
Did he really?
Of course he did, and did he put any of that up?
Award, like all of his service.
It was a very big award, I forget the exact name that they discussed with this morning, I don't know, but it's.
Well deserved, you see, of course, he posts about the kids, but puts nothing on him by himself, of course, as he would do that. But, yeah, I just want to recognize our Interact kids that really go above and beyond in the community and a well deserved award.
Pretty good.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, I don't fully students, but we do have staff.
Yes, I think my support's like longer than anybody's. Um, all right, from Mrs. Nickel, the fifth grade E L A class has adopted a cow. It's a long story. She gave it to us, we got it. Last year as fourth graders, they had the absolutely wonderful experience of participating with other fourth grades in the state with the county days. Put on by New Hampshire Agriculture in conjunction with other state organizations. We, being part of Brafton, went to the Rox Estate and got to experience many aspects of agriculture from recycling, solar power. Maple syrup to four H students demonstrating, working with their cattle. And she is hopeful that this year's fourth grade will also get the opportunity to participate in that fantastic state program. The students upon returning wanted also to get the opportunity to open a, wanted a cow. They asked Mr. Robert, they had, they had several ideas about the care, et cetera, but he still said no.
Oh, who has?
Oh, no, 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 in the backfield.
All right, so when the opportunity over the summer came to participate in the New Hampshire Dairy Council and New Hampshire Agriculture Program, adopt a cow. She jumped on it, they now have a cow. We interact monthly through letters, videos, et cetera, there are lessons aligned to standards, virtual tours and real tours are available. The students are reading and learning about cows and et cetera. The calf was born on September ninth, twenty twenty three, she has a Jersey Heifer weighing fifty two pounds, twenty eight inches long, her name is Celestial. Our host farm is the Mc Glassling Farm in Claremont, New Hampshire. Host farmer is Julie, so far we are having fun and looking forward to each experience.
Very cool.
Um, and as Mr. Robert said, Caleb was chosen, just kind of reading through what she said, New Hampshire Kid Governor. Um, he will be uploading his video, video campaign that the class has been working on on Thursday. Hopefully he'll be one of the seven selected for us to vote on November seventh. The kids, all the kids worked on his video to submit, and she would also like to thank Christie, uh, Duris and Dan Adams for helping today with the filming in a pinch with short notice. From Mrs. Whedon, the sophomore class has been collecting funds all week to support breast cancer awareness. All the funds raised at the end of the week, but we donated to Metaviver in memory of Claire Bijou. We are grateful to the Linwood Community Support for Breast Cancer Research. From Ben Wither, some seniors visited Plymouth State University last Friday, nine out of eleven. They took a tour of campus, met with the admissions counselor and had lunch in one of the dining halls. The students were asked to bring their transcripts along and Matt from admissions met with each senior individually at lunch and made on the spot decisions for admissions. They were all accepted to P S U.
Wow.
And they were told which merit scholarships they would receive based on their G P A. The kids had a great time wandering the campus, seeing dorm rooms and academic halls and checking out downtown. Even some seniors who thought they may or may not attend college were pre-inspired, it was truly an awesome day. Thank you to administration for allowing us this opportunity, Mr. Manning for setting it all up, also trying to get down to King and N H T I.
Fantastic.
From Mrs. Krill. The middle school soccer season wrapped up, a very successful season last week culminating with an undefeated boys' record and a very positive finish for the girls as well. As coaches, we appreciated the sportsmanship of our families who also came out to cheer at our games. And English classes have become their annual poetry out loud and rotary speech traditions. This year's theme for the rotary is to write a speech illustrating hope in our schools. And I added that grade eight has been working with staff from Hubbard Brook for the last month or so, setting up a research plot on campus. Tagging trees, testing spring water and learning about research done in the experimental forest. This winter, well, uh, they will come visit us here on campus to share more research studies and weed activities about our local ecology. And then in the spring, we'll study the phenology of the spring season in the forest here and also at Hubbard Brook. Grade seven recently got a visit from a meteorologist at Mount Washington. Who treated them each to a stylish backpack filled with weather related gear, a remote thermometer, crowd and weather charts and some Mount Washington swag. Um, she shared with them some interesting stories about life on the summit and the importance of the data that is being collected every hour of every day. And tomorrow I'm taking a group of eighth and ninth graders to the A M C Highland Center to finish up the U N H STEM study that we started last fall. It was an effort by U N H to have students make STEM connections to various activities that they already do and how they may have potential for career paths.
Nice, thank you.
Not as it. Lot of good stuff.
Yeah. All right, I don't see any community unless it's the king, they didn't say, no?
I'm not sure.
Um, then I guess I would uh, poll the board to go into, we need a non-public seating, right?
Just a quick, to go over, yeah, yeah.
Perfect. Poll, I want to get the non-public. Um, so.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Um, yes.
You don't think fun?
Yes, no.
Yeah, tonight's final, I think, you have.